All right, I'm going to call to order the council meeting on April 20th at 5:35. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, and Shannon is calling me right now. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, to the five.
With liberty and justice for us.
A real call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Alder Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbs.
Here.
Alder Maldonado is absent. Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Drasman is absent. Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
At least we have a quorum. So, welcome everyone to that's new to the council or returning to council. You know, it's been, this is starting out my third year as mayor, and it's been great. It's, the past year was the most challenging year that we maybe ever had, and I hope to never repeat that ever again. So, make sure you're wearing masks and preventing pandemics in the future, everyone, please. But, you know, I do want to just speak to the importance of this. I know that I hear from people in the community all the time about how thankful they are for people who run, but they also expect a lot out of us. And, you know, I think it's important to remember and know that the public is watching, and I hear from people when things happen at council meetings, and they talk about that. And so, they want to make sure that we are obviously looking out for what's best for them and for the city, but also conducting ourselves in professional manner. So, I do expect that of myself and all of you as well. So, hopefully we can do that, and hopefully we will be able to be in council chambers a lot more this year than we have been in the past, because I think that's something that we missed a little bit last year, is being able to build those, you know, just little relationships and little conversations before and after meetings and getting to know each other that way. So, I'm looking forward to it, and I hope it's a great year. And with that, I will turn it over to our acting city administrator, Mike Zimmerman, to talk a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor Aaron. And, welcome to the city council. We see familiar faces and new faces, and the entire city staff team, department heads and city staff really look forward to working with you over the next year to do a lot of good things for our residents, our constituents, and businesses in Pittsburgh. So, I'm one of the co-acting administrators right now. My colleague, Misty Dodge, is the other co-acting. So, I think you saw the announcement yesterday, and you'll be formalizing, hopefully, a contract with our future city administrator, Chad Brecklin. But in the interim, definitely utilize Misty and myself as a conduit for any questions that you have, information that you need, and requests for department heads and city staff. And, the city administrator is the conduit and kind of the connection between you and the department heads and city staff. And we would encourage you to utilize the city administrator as that conduit. So if there's something that you would like staff to work on, or if there's an item that you would like to have brought up on a future city council agenda, again, we would encourage you to really work through our city administrator. That helps us run a more efficient and effective organization. It's really hard for the city administrator if individual alders are contacting various department staff, and they're not kind of aware of maybe some things that staff are starting to work on at the direction of an individual alder. It really should be coordinated through the city administrator position. So if you can help us with that, that really goes a long way towards running an effective organization, and the city administrator will follow up with you to make sure that you're getting the information that you need from the department head or city staff person. Your city emails should be active, and in the next week or so, you'll be sent a link from Fact TV, and that will include a series of videos from our respective city departments. That kind of gives you an overview of what each department does, our various activities, the staff people involved. And then, we would encourage you to not only schedule this time to come in and meet with the city administrator, once Chad's in place and hitting the ground running here, but also encourage you to come in and meet with various department heads if you have questions regarding their department and some of the activities and their purview of their respective departments after you have a chance to watch the video. I'd also encourage you to look at the annual reports that are going to be sent out from their respective departments. That kind of gives you a year-end review and a look back at their activities, but it, I think, gives a really good snapshot of the activities and all the work that the various departments are involved in and doing in the day-to-day work of running the city of Pittsburgh. Let me see. You will receive your committee assignments, I think probably tonight. Most of those will be wrapped up for the standing committees and the other committees. And then, I think that's all that I had on these. Coming up on April 28th, that's the committee of the whole meeting on Wednesday night. There will be SIBIC training there. That's going to be the anti-bullying and kind of anti-bias, or I don't think I have the right term there, unconscious bias, I think, training there. And then, our city attorney, Valerie Zissman, will also be taking you through the Roberts' Rules of Order and Ethics as well. And then, I would just add, just a couple of friendly reminders here is just always be conscious of walking quorums. If we send you kind of an email that goes out to the entire council, don't hit reply to all, so we're not creating any walking quorum issues. And also, just be conscious of quorums of committees that you might be a part of as well, so we don't run into any issues as far as walking quorums. And then, lastly, just more from the planning economic development standpoint and working with the mayor, you'll probably be contacted at various points and times from different developers on projects. We'd encourage you to kind of meet with people, but be non-committal on projects or TIF requests or things like that until you've had a chance to get a really good kind of briefing on the project from the mayor, the city administrator, and city, city staff going forward. I think that covers everything that was on my agenda. Any questions from anybody?
I think I'll just add to, you know, kind of when you were talking about working with the administrator and myself, I think we found that you're going to be a lot more successful if you have something you want to do and just talking with us first, because we can help you navigate some of those potholes and just make sure that what you're trying to do is more likely to be successful, so you don't forget to certain things, maybe to, you know, refer it to a certain committee or anything like that. So it's always better if you do start with the administrator and myself, and we can direct you to the right people, provide some guidance anyway, and help you out with those things as well.
I think one other thing we'd like to get back to is there's been kind of a flurry of direct referrals as of late, and some of that is with some short staffing and some projects coming forward, but we'd really like to get back to regular order, where things get referred out at one meeting, they go to the respective committees, and then they come back at the next council meeting or whenever the appropriate, you know, date of the next council meeting is for that action item. Again, that allows us just to run more effectively and efficiency, and I think it helps the public kind of follow along too as far as the different items and projects that are out there.
All right, any other questions?
And once again, I'll just say, the entire city staff welcomes you, and we look forward to working with you over the next year.
All right, so if you want, someone could move to amend the election of council president and the recommendation of standing committee appointments to the end, or if you want to do it right now anyway, we can still go ahead with that, but I guess I leave it up to you guys.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to postpone those items to later in the agenda.
Second.
All right, sent by Randy. All in favor of amending the agenda and move the next two items down to the end? Say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, then that is moved down. And I can go to mayoral appointments of council members to committees and commissions, and I've actually emailed everyone this and talked to you already, so there's no surprises here, but I can read it off for the public. Randy is going to be on planning commission on ag and rural affairs. Joe is going to continue on bike committee and then also be on the housing committee. Dave is going to be the chair of public works for me and also on the commission on aging well. Julia is going to be on CEDA and on parks. Shannon's going to be on EMS and landmarks. Gabriella is going to be on RCC, TTC, and tree committee. Jim is going to be on the board of public works and CEDA, and then Jay is going to be on the library and healthy neighborhoods. So, no surprises. All right, then mayoral appointments of citizen members to committees and commissions, there's two kind of buckets. The first one is re-appointments, and these are all people whose terms were expiring and they wish to be, continue on there, and I am reappointing them unless there's any issues. And then, the second part will go individually, and those are new appointments. And those, all those people on there were people that are taking over for people who decided they didn't want to continue. So I, none of those people are people I said I'm not reappointing you. These are all people that are taking open spots from someone else. But we take the first one, usually take that one as a block, and unless there's something, someone that someone wants to take out of there, but if there's a motion for that, that'd be great.
Move approval.
Second half motion.
All right, and is there any discussion or anyone that you want to take out of? This is just for the re-appointments right here. Anything that anyone wants to remove from that?
I had a question. Is the, is the term for police and fire, is that a longer? Is that, that one longer? I'm sorry for my ignorance.
Police and fire commission is five years.
Okay, so I should have talked about this. Please raise your hand throughout, and we're not just, it just helps a lot to keep order. And so, I'll call you at that point in time. So, police and fire is five years. Now, we do have the one person tonight who is going to be a new appointment. She is actually taking over the term for Jim Wheeler, since he is elected. He resigned from PFC. Next week, we will do the other PFC position, but those are five years if it's the full one.
Thank you.
All right, so, all in favor of approving the mayoral re-appointments? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, those are approved. And then, one by one, we can go through the new appointments. Jesse Pringle online or here? No? All right, well, we'll maybe come back to him. I know he knows about it and he's emailed about it. Did he register?
Come up, Lisa.
He hasn't? Okay. All right, Donna Stewart, is Donna online here?
Yes, she is.
All right, Donna, why don't you go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving?
Oh, it'd be my pleasure. I've served in a variety of ways in all of the communities that we have resided in, more with food and housing and security issues, food pantries, and some other community council-related, and of course, a variety of church positions through, through the years. So, serving on the commission for aging well maybe is a reflection of a personal interest in aging well, but it takes me in a new and different direction in serving the community. So, does that, is that enough of an introduction or an expression of my interest?
That's great. If anyone has any questions for you, I can ask those. I don't, I'm not seeing any right now, so it must have been great, and people don't have questions. Is there a motion to approve, Donna? Moved by Jay.
Second.
Sent by Randy. All in favor of approving Donna? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, thank you very much, Donna. You're approved. All right, what about Brock? Is Brock available? No? All right. Emily? All right, Emily is here in chambers. Come on up, Emily, tell us about yourself, why you're interested.
Is it on? Yeah, it's on. Great. So, my name is Emily Born. I live in the Belmar Renaissance on the Park neighborhood, and first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me the time to express my interest in the plan commission and tell you a little bit about what I think I could bring to the role. I'm interested in serving on the planning commission because I deeply care about this community and because I've had a longstanding interest in planning. I'm currently very fortunate to be serving on the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Grant Review Committee with a couple of you, and I'm also a volunteer at the Allied Food Pantry. I've been interested in planning for many years and have been informally educating myself about it by reading, doing informational interviews with members of the planning committee, and attending lectures on topics like streetscapes and how they can impact the economic viability and safety of the community. In addition, I believe my background and disposition would make me a valuable part of the plan commission. I have a degree in economics and have studied how government in particular can work with outside entities such as businesses and organizations to create positive outcomes for a community that also benefit all parties involved. Further, I've had a career in media planning where I've had the opportunity to develop applicable skills such as how to critically analyze data, including community surveys, and identify needs, how to create plans to address those needs and think through future implications of that plan even after the original goal has been satisfied, how to share recommendations, solicit feedback, and inspire buy-in, how to review and evaluate proposals, set performance indicators, and last, how to actively listen and facilitate meetings to bring in a variety of points of view and listen to a variety of stakeholders. When working, I have very strong opinions, and I will voice them, but I will always also keep an open mind, and I value opposing points of view. Working together, I believe, makes projects stronger and will enable us to create what is best for the people of Pittsburgh. In conclusion, given my community commitment, interest in planning, background, and mindset, I believe I would be a valuable addition to the plan commission. I hope you agree, and I hope to have your vote. Thank you very much for your time and for listening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Emily at all? All right, Julia?
Oh, can I do anything?
Oh, microphone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Emily, for, you know, for applying for the position, for the, for Plan Commission. I met you, we shared the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, and, you know, when we reviewed the grant application one month ago, you did, you know, I was impressed with the quality of question that you asked, and you well-prepared you to come. And it's good that you, you know, applied for Plan Commission, and it's a, it's a, I think it's a commission that every alder should, should be participating in that. So, do you have any idea what the Plan Commission role is?
Yeah, I've been in contact with both Sonia and Lisa about it, and I've read through a bunch of documents that they've put through. I'm familiar with a lot of the zoning that's going on, and then about the contingencies or conditional use. I definitely have a lot to learn, but it's definitely something, as I said, that has been a long-term interest, and so I'm really ready to dig in and learn more.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve then?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Jay, signed by Gabriella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Those are approved, and don't forget, we got a meeting in about 35 minutes. Hopefully, you know that. All right, I think so. All right, I don't see Sheena online either. All right, and then Sue, I believe Sue's on. Sue, would you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on tree advisory?
Sure. I, we've been, we've been living in Pittsburgh now for 20 years, and if you go past my house on Jackwood Drive, you'll see that most of the grass is gone. I'm a self-taught native plant gardener, and I have a interest also in native trees. I am, I have no professional training, just personal experience, and so I know the basics of tree care. Since our house backs up to Jacqueline, I'm sorry, to McKee Park, I've been watching for 20 years the city's efforts to establish and care for the trees in the park, and likewise on the, on the city thoroughfares. And it looks like the city is really working hard to establish a lot of tree canopy. And, I can also see how hard it must be to find the funds to do that, given how fast the city has grown even since we've been here. So, I'm just hoping that by serving, I have the time and the interest to serve on this committee, and I would like to help contribute to the city's efforts to improve and maintain its, its tree goals.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Sue?
I want to make a comment. So, hi Sue, this is Julia. So, hi, so she's from District Two, so I am very happy to have someone from District Two in the tree committee, so, thank you.
All right. Yeah, Jay.
I don't know how familiar you are with Emerald Ash Bore, which was a really big problem some years ago, and I understand it's making a little bit of a resurgence. Are you, have you heard much about that and where we're, where we are with it now? Yeah.
Well, I have a great big ash tree in the backyard, and we are having it treated regularly, so I'm aware of the problem, and it seems like, it seems like it's still going on because recently several huge ash trees were taken out of the Tower Hill Park, which is around the corner from us. So, I'm aware of it. It seems like it's still an issue.
It is. All right, Gabriella.
Sue, I just appreciate your comments. The tree advisory committee has been busy this year working on a tree protection ordinance, and I'm the alder member of the committee, so I look forward to having you join us.
Thank you. Me too.
All right, anyone else? Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All right, moved by Gabriella, signed by Jay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
Aye.
As approved? All right, excellent. Oh, we got both Joe and Shannon online? Excellent. All right, next we'll go to do the resolutions quick, and then we can do the election of council president. First resolution is RE 321. Does someone want to do a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All right, sent by Dave. And we do this every year. It doesn't need an official newspaper, and that's where we do all of our notices. It's something we just have to renew every year. And it has to be the state journal because it's daily. The Star doesn't publish enough for our needs. Any questions? All right, see none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. And what about Resolution B? Does someone want to move that one?
I move approval of Resolution R 8421, designating official posting locations.
Second.
All right, moved by Gabriella, seconded by Jay. Again, something we do every year and where we officially post our different notices that are required. Is there any questions about this one? All right, see none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. All right, back up to the election of council president. We've got everyone online now. I will open it up for nominations for council president. Gabriella.
I would like to nominate Alder Radifrada for council president.
All right, and Julia, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
All right, Jim?
I would like to nominate Randy Udell for council president.
All right, Randy, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do.
All right, any other nominations at all? All right, see none? Then I will close the nominations and give each of you a chance to speak to why you would like to be the council president, and since Julia was first, I'll let you go ahead
Okay, so, thank you, Gabriella, for the nomination. So, fellow alders, I would like to renew your support as a council president. This past year has, was a tough year for our city and for our council. I feel that we were not able to finish with many of the initiatives that we have in mind a year ago. One of the main responsibilities of the council president is to lead the committee of the whole's meetings. These meetings provide the opportunity to learn about the city's initiative, training opportunity, in-depth research, and solution discussions. The hope is that the open conversation and exchange of ideas leads to thoughtful and proactive solutions for the city problems and challenges. However, the COVID-19 pandemic disrupted our lives, work, and way of interacting with each other, including many of the activity and plans for the committee of the whole. Because of a limited number of call meetings, prevented me from scheduling a meeting with a state rep, then county supervisor, a school superintendent, and I had planned a trip to the town of Madison. In my second year as a council president, I want, I want to recapture all this activity, and I would like to add discussion about climate change, and resilient infrastructure, social justice, policing, and public transit. All of these topics remain relevant, and we must tackle them. Yet, in spite of the challenges brought by the pandemic, we accomplished many tasks. The past council discusses and decided on issues ranging from the annexation of the town of Madison, to the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, to several flooding and stormwater studies, among others. The council also engaged on several important trainings activity, and I also participated in virtual meetings, monthly meeting with the mayor and the city administrator to discuss current issues. And I also mentor fellows, alders, that request my guidance. But while I am proud of our work, many other tasks remain, and this remain, and this is the reason why I wanted to continue to lead the council for another year. For the sixth year, I have been balancing the needs of District Two with finding solutions for the entire city. I participated in many committees and commissions under different leadership roles. I work on initiatives from Forward Fitchville, to the inclusive playground in McKee-Fern Park, to the hub in the North Fitchhatchery Road, among others. During all those years, I fully dedicated to the progress of the city to become an experienced, responsible, and community-focused leader. And that meant having proposal and resolution accepted, and having proposal and ideas rejected. I learned, as I worked with three different mayors, collaborated with many alders, including some of you, and city staff and neighbors. I think I became a nimble leader that aimed to understand and represent our diverse community and have the knowledge and experience necessary to work collaboratively on the vital issues facing our city. I collaborate and introduce my own initiative, resolution, amendment to the CIP, to the comprehensive plan, to budget, et cetera. And I still learned. I learned that we are all bring different experiences and perspective to the table. I want some discussion, but I lost so many more. And I hope that the civility in our discussion that improved last year, we can be, it can be better the next, this coming year. For the 2021, 21, 22 year, I look forward to working with each of you to continue our proven record of sustainable budget, a stronger neighborhood, business development, safety and equity promotion all over our neighborhoods, and quality of life across our city. I plan to continue to bring forward the agenda that includes developing policies and supporting programs that will improve city access and opportunity for all our residents as we become a more inclusive city. Fitchville is a diverse, vibrant, young, and growing community that needs public leaders that understand broader issues, has institutional knowledge, and treat opinion as protected with respect and integrity while reflecting the population that they represent. The population that they look like them, and sometimes they sound like them. These are the values that I bring as a council president, as an alder. I embrace the responsibility of this body in a way that we can build a safe, equitable, and inclusive city that provides opportunity for all its residents. As a council president, I look forward to working with this council and with face new challenges. Together, this body will strengthen our resident potential to move our city forward. And I look ahead to work with the Mayor Richardson and the new city administrator to ensure the delivery of city services, maintain our infrastructure and tax base, improve the quality of life of our citizens and staff, and above everything, I want to build a strong, safe, and inclusive Fitchville for all. I hope you will give me another opportunity to continue to serve as your council president. I hope we have the opportunity to continue to move Fitchville forward. And I look that the And I look that the, the city elected leadership look like the, this, our city. Muchas gracias, and thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. And Randy, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the floor to share why I am running to become council president. As many of you know, I got involved in government to ensure government works for everyone, not just a select few. I'm passionate about the Pittsburgh City Council, and I believe as a collective body, we can make Fitchville work for all of us. This has been my guiding compass as I've worked with the city council to address climate change, advocate for thoughtful development, ensure all residents have high-quality services at an affordable price, and protect our agricultural sector. While we may not agree on those and other issues, we are all here because we, we care about the people of Fitchville. As council president, I would bring the, this mindset to the position by developing and strengthening relationships with all council members based on mutual respect, valuing, valuing differences of opinion and common ground, fostering collaboration, working to achieve positive outcomes for all parties, revitalizing and enhancing the relationship between city government and our communities, leveraging our exceptional city staff, stewarding our tax dollars for efficiency and affordability. Over the coming years, Fitchville will undergo a lot of change, including welcoming new communities into Fitchville. This will require someone with my mindset of focusing on the common good, bringing people together, and working for positive outcomes. I believe I am the right person for the position. In addition to my time on council, I bring my financial expertise as a state treasurer for a major political party, which is responsible for managing a $45 million budget, and my 30-plus years of professional work experience and leadership in the private sector with a Fortune 500 company. I would greatly appreciate your vote. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
All right, any questions or comments for candidates? Yeah, Jay, go ahead.
As somebody who once held that position, I'm aware of what is required to make it work, and we accomplished a lot of stuff. Part of that accomplishment was done because I spent a lot of time communicating with people about stuff that was going on. I would talk to people when issues were coming up. And Julia, in the time that you've been in this position, and in the time that you've been on the council, when I was running Fitchburg Days, Fitchburg Days would come to the council with permits that I had no idea there were any issues with, and all of a sudden, a bomb gets dropped at a council meeting. That's not leadership. Leadership would have been to make a phone call ahead of time and say, "Hey, I have these issues. What can we do to resolve them?" That's the kind of leadership it takes to deal with a city that's growing as fast as this one is. So, while I appreciate your, the time that you've put into this, and I appreciate some of the effort that you've, you've done in your, in, in the position, I will not be supporting you.
Any other questions for the candidates or comments at all? All right, so, oh, sorry, yeah, Gabriella, sorry.
I just, like, I mean, I, I nominated Alder Radifrada, and I'd just like to say that as a new alder, the committee of the whole meetings have been very important to me in terms of learning about what's happening at the city, and I've been impressed with the, you know, kind of the programming that the current council president has put on, Alder Radifrada has put on, in understanding the vast majority of issues that are facing the city. Town of Madison, Madison annexation, stormwater projects, Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative, there was a wide variety, and the specific items that, that Julia has listed in her speech as things that we can bring up in the coming years, climate change, sustainability, public transit, things like that I think are very important, and, and it's one of the reasons why I support her.
All right, anyone else? All right, so for those of you here in chambers, you have a piece of paper in front of you to write down who you'd like to vote for. Julia, you're the only one not in chambers right now. You can either direct message, back TV through Zoom, or you can text me if you want, whichever way is convenient for you, and I will grab the ballots and tablet. Please hold. All right, with a count of five to three, the council president this year is Randy Udell. Randy, are you ready to appoint the standing committees?
Yes, I am.
All right, go ahead.
The standing committees, the three standing committees are finance, personnel, and public safety. On the finance committee, I will be chairing that particular committee. Vice chair will be Gabriella Gerhart, and the third is Jim Wheeler. Personnel, Julia Radifrada is chair, Gabriella Gerhart, vice chair, Joe Meladono is the third. Public safety, Dave Herbst is chair, Shannon Strassman, vice chair, and Jay Allen, third.
All right, thank you very much.
Need copies? I have copies.
All right, and that is everything on the agenda. Next council meeting is next Tuesday night, and the committee of the whole is the night after that on the 28th. We'll do some just general, basic council stuff and some general training. Is there a move to adjourn? Moved by Jay, signed by Shannon. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, we are adjourned.